Good morning, everybody. Welcome to Spokane City Council's Study Session. Apologies for the delay. We had a little technical issue here in chambers. So today, we're going to have an update from Sarah Nuss on COVID response. And then we're going to move into a discussion about Community Health Needs Assessment, and then discuss citywide strategic planning. So we'll go right to you, Sarah. Good morning.
Thank you. Good morning, everybody. I am here to just share some of the statistics from the Health District that I was not able to share last week. So these data are going to be for April 25th through May 1st, so just a few days outdated now. New cases, our rate of new cases per day is an average of 105. When it comes to our age groups, lots of discussion around the fact that currently, right now, 24% of the new cases are being carried by the age group of 20 to 29. Another 19% are being carried from the age group of 10 to 19. So, you know, a lot of the message from the Health District was from Dr. Glasquez to, you know, how can we work to get this age group vaccinated? How can we work to make it more attractive? What can we do to make it more convenient? Lots of work going on in that arena. Cases by race, just going to read them all out. American Indian and Alaskan Native is 3%, Asian 1%, Black 3%, Hispanic 2%. Native Hawaiian or other Pacific Islander is 1%. Other or unknown, as in non-reported, would be 25%. And then white or Caucasian is 65%. Our rate of new cases per 100,000 people for the last two weeks is 280. We had four new deaths last week, one individual between age 10 and 19, one in their 60s, one in their 70s, and one in their 80s. And there were 70 deaths last, or sorry, seven deaths last week. As far as testing goes, the average number of test daily, individuals tested daily is 901. Percent positivity is 10.1. That's down from last week. When it comes to vaccination data in our community here in Spokane County, the percent of the eligible population that has been vaccinated, so that means everyone aged 16 and above, is 31.88%. So we're doing great there. It's nearly through the population. Our isolation facilities are doing well, both at 15 and 17% capacity, so lots of room until we shut that down. And that is the end of my report for today.
All right. But I guess before I let you leave, do we have any update on reopening the first floor and third floor counters in City Hall? What's the plan on that?
So we, our workgroup met yesterday. And the plan for now is to hold until we know what the governor will be saying in two weeks, since we are currently holding at Phase 3. We just want to stay consistent along with that messaging and with what other businesses are doing. However, we are working with some of the third floor and first floor services to try and get some appointments going on so that we can continue increasing our opportunity to provide those services in person, but still maintaining our current status quo of City Hall being closed to the public. So we'll be releasing some guidance on that and what the plan is moving forward here in about two weeks, in line with the governor's declaration.
All right. Thank you. Any questions for Sarah? All right. Not seeing any. Again, thanks always. We really appreciate your coming to see us on Thursdays. And we'll see you next week. All right. Next up is Community Health Needs Assessment. I have it down as Melissa Morrison, but I'm assuming, Melissa, that you're going to be turning it over to some of our visitors. So take it away.
Yes, thank you. And good afternoon, council. I have been working and some other council staff with Councilmember Wilkerson in the participating in the National League of Cities, Cities of Opportunity, Community of Practice around cities and health systems. This study session was requested by Councilmember Wilkerson to share some of the information that we've learned with council on strategies for city leaders to partner with health systems to address complex issues surrounding root causes of health inequity. The Cities of Opportunity Community of Practice is working to ensure robust city and health system partnership to improve health outcomes and advance the, and advance the health of our cities. Right now, the cities in the Community of Practice are Baton Rouge, Louisiana, Bloomington, Illinois, Charlotte, North Carolina, Dallas, Texas, Grand Rapids, Michigan, Huntington, West Virginia, Lawrence, Massachusetts, Pittsburgh, Pennsylvania, Roanoke, Virginia, and us. The two cities that we have been most closely working with in our smaller cohorts have been Dallas and Charlotte. And so we have three presenters today. Just to give you kind of a quick overview of the three folks presenting is, first, Kevin Barnett. He's from the Public Health Institute to give a big-picture focus of why are we looking at this and the partnership and collaboration between systems nationwide. And he has been doing this around the country, so can also give some ideas of how other cities have implemented some of these strategies. Sarah Clement Sampson from Providence on what the community benefit process is, the past assessments for the Spokane region, and update on the next Community Health Needs Assessment. And then Helene Dewey from the Spokane Regional Health Department to talk more about specifically health equity in Spokane and looking at the upstream models. So they're going to each be giving about a 15-minute presentation, but feel free to ask questions. We've built in some time for discussion, but we're really hoping this will be a fruitful conversation for council to kind of learn what we've been doing. And so if Councilmember Wilkerson wants to add anything, since she's been a very helpful participant in this process.
I just want to welcome everyone, our speakers today. And as we've been looking at issues in our city, I have always been challenged with why are we not partnering more with the other folks, especially our healthcare entities? And they are doing the assessments as we are trying to assess our city and the role we could play and how we can partner to leverage this work for the best outcome. So I'm looking forward to what's going to be presented today. And thank you all again for being here.
So first, we're going to hear from Kevin Barnett.
Thank you, Melissa. Thank you, Councilmember Wilkerson. It's been a pleasure to work with you folks thus far. I am the Director of the Center to Advance Community Health Inequity at the Public Health Institute. I've spent much of the last 30 years working with hospitals, health systems, cities, counties, a variety of government agencies and community groups with a focus on a more strategic approach to how do we address not just the symptoms, but the underlying drivers of poor health in our communities. I, a quick question to Melissa, would you like me to bring up the PowerPoint on my end so I can advance the slides?
Yep, that's great if you want to do it on your end.
Great. So I want to do my best to stay closer to 10 than to 15 minutes because I really welcome the opportunity to engage folks in conversation. But what I want to try to do is to provide a big picture of, a big-picture perspective on this work. So bear with me here as I get, right, and now the slide. Okay. So this, this effort and our partnership with the National League of Cities is, involves working directly with teams of city staff and leaders to look at ways in which they can engage hospitals. Obviously, our historical view of hospitals is providers of acute care medical services. Increasingly, and as I'll make the point in the course of this presentation, they are at a juncture, an important juncture in their history in looking at the degree to which they remain acute care medical centers and the degree to which they expand, take on an expanding role in improving health in our communities. So this is, this is to look at these issues. And I'd be remiss, particularly given the update we just received, if I didn't acknowledge where we are in the context of the COVID pandemic, as well as the growing awareness in the wake of the Black Lives Matter movement and its growth. This pandemic has certainly impacted us in terms of insurance coverage. We're back, we're back up to 31 million without coverage. We still have 12 states that haven't implemented the Medicaid expansion. And many of our markets are still predominantly fee-for-service, but we recognizing, recognize we're moving towards risk-based reimbursement. Just a few points about what's happened during COVID. We've had, we've had at least 10 years of what was projected as movement towards telehealth in a matter of months as part of this pandemic. This is really opening some new doors in ways in which we expand access. Assuming we give, provide access to broadband. We have between 20 and 40 million residents in our communities across the country that still lack access to broadband. But we've also seen fairly significant drops in outpatient visits for key chronic illnesses that, that need to be effectively managed. Perhaps most significantly, as I talk to healthcare leaders across the country, is the recognition, A, that we have profound inequities in our communities, social and economic, that are major drivers of our health inequities, and that we have to begin to take this issue on in a more fundamental way. And secondarily, we have profoundly under-invested in our public health infrastructure. So how do we begin to link arms to address these issues in a more effective way? This, this, this slide captures where we are and where we're moving towards in the healthcare arena. The vertical axis really lays out the alphabet soup of different changes that we're making in the payment models, gradually moving increasingly towards risk-based reimbursement, which in layman's terms means that hospitals, health plans, and others will make more money if we can keep people healthy and out of our acute care facilities. On the horizontal axis, part of providing the engine for moving in this direction is that we are getting better and better at doing analyses. Looking at patients with common conditions, then beginning to look at the factors that impact the panels, and then beginning to see that there are geographic patterns that these, that these kinds of issues are, emerge in particular neighborhoods. And so how do we work with a variety of stakeholders to address these issues? That's, that is clearly what is in the minds of all but those healthcare leaders that have their heads in the sand. Everybody I talked to indicates that we've got to prepare for this. This is a part of competitive advantage, is how we build the capacity to address these issues. The stumbling block, of course, are the broad array of factors that are all well outside of what we have traditionally done in the healthcare arena, all of which have a dramatic impact upon our health and well-being in our populations. One area we're growing greater sensitivity to is this concept of toxic stress or, or in clinical terms, allostatic load. We know that the kind of stress that you and I experience is, doesn't compare to the kind of stress of people today-to-day are wondering how they're going to pay rent, are utilities going to cut off? Is the car going to start this morning? I just got called into my second job, and who's picking up the kids from school? These are the kinds of day-to-day challenges that we now know have a direct impact upon glucose tolerance, upon cardiovascular function, and contribute to much poorer health among populations at the lower end of the economic strata. We also know that the pandemic that we experienced before the current one was diabetes and is diabetes. And, and for the first time in modern history, we are seeing life expectancy going down in our country because of the large and growing number of people with diabetes. What we also know about diabetes is that there are an array of factors, just as I described, that are real drivers of this. And we need to think more comprehensively as we address these issues. The good news is that we are beginning to come together. If you look at the domains of activity listed across the top. In the healthcare arena, of course, the lion's share of focus has been on clinical care and clinical drivers. What we're now understanding is that behavior, social determinants, and physical environment are all have, all have an impact as well. And we're doing this just as our colleagues in the chambers and planning agencies and community development, financial institutions, and our municipalities are recognizing that we need to look beyond the physical environment to look at how it impacts people's behavior and, and the way in which they engage socially. We can't talk about this issue without acknowledging that many people in our communities are starting from a standpoint in the historical challenge that began in the 30s, where the federal government began creating, basically, the redlined communities that forced predominantly African-Americans fleeing Jim Crow policies in the South into much smaller proportions of our cities. At the same time, we removed access to, to traditional mortgages. We saw capital flight. We've, we've seen a process while redlining has ended technically, we know that there are still prejudicial practices among lenders. And we know that we created a dynamic where we have multi-generational poverty. The same parts of our cities that were redlined now 70, 80 years ago are still the poorest parts of our cities. So how do we begin to, to reverse this historical dynamic? How do we come to terms with, with the practical realities facing the people that live in these particular neighborhoods? So as it relates to hospitals, particularly nonprofit hospitals, and their community benefit obligations, it's important to know that property tax exemption collected on behalf of cities is, represents the largest component of their tax exemption. We also know that some of the first-class actions against nonprofit hospitals came in the northeastern United States as we began to see white flight, Caucasian populations leaving the city and move into suburbs, these areas being emptied out, and low-income community members, the only ones retaining. And we began to see patterns of service among nonprofit hospitals of serving those, those suburban, suburb, suburb populations while not providing sufficient services to those in the low-income urban areas. And cities began to question whether or not hospitals were returning the value of their property tax exemption. So we saw a range of these kinds of city-class actions, particularly in the 70s. This has evolved to, or an array of state statutes in the 80s and 90s and beyond. And, and what really brought this into focus for the, for the Senate at the federal level was a report on a practice at Yale New Haven Medical Center in early 2000s. They were given a $20 million contribution by a wealthy donor. They put that money into the stock market while that money was intended explicitly to pay for charity care for those who qualified for charity care. And it was learned that they were going aggressively after these low-income populations while investing this money in the stock market. This caused our, our Senate, the Senate Finance Committee, under Senator Grassley in particular, to begin to ask what, in fact, what is the difference between nonprofits and for-profits? So all of this continues to be of interest. And here's a story that just came out in January, where, again, Yale New Haven is looking at an expansion. Residents who live in nearby neighborhoods are worried about them being displaced to make room for, for this new facility. Even more recently, just this last month, a study came out in Health Affairs that questions whether or not hospitals are providing enough charity care. I have an array of questions. In fact, I'm working on a response article to this because they focused simply on charity care and overlooked the broad array of other kinds of contributions, in fact, that we are and should be encouraging hospitals to make, again, working with cities and others. So all of this is the work of our Center to Advance Community Health Inequity. We look at ways in which to use, both to report the data that hospitals report under 990 Schedule H. We do GIS analysis of social determinants, look at community health needs assessments and implementation strategies, and look at overlays as it relates to public health communities' assessments and, and implementation plans, as well as a variety of other sources of data to, to help inform these efforts. This is an example of a GIS map that we used as part of a study we did for the CDC a few years ago, using what's called the Vulnerable Populations Footprint Tool. In this map highlights how two different nonprofit health systems define their service area for low-income populations. One hospital, one group of hospitals defined their community in a way, the black outlined area looks like it specifically works around those tan census tracts, which are the census tracts where poverty was concentrated in those, in those communities. So it's just to highlight that there are an array of increasingly sophisticated tools that will bring growing transparency to not only what kinds of behaviors do we want to encourage, but how can we better allocate our resources? These are the categories that nonprofit hospitals report in, in their 990. This is an excerpt from some work that we did in Los, in a section of Los Angeles, Service Plan in Areas 3 and 4. You see, there's some big numbers here, but by far the biggest expenditures is in terms, is in the form of Medicaid shortfalls, over a half a billion dollars for a group of about 20 hospitals in part of LA. Point this out because a significant proportion of those expenditures for Medicaid shortfalls are for treatment of preventable conditions. In essence, if those individuals had timely access to primary care and preventive services, they would not have ended up in the emergency rooms of these hospitals. This is, these are a set of diagnoses that are, were developed and sanctioned by the Agency for Healthcare Research, quality of the federal government. And these are specific diagnoses, specific ITD 10 codes that one can look at and geocode for any community that will enable you to see where these concentrations are. This is a map we developed for the same area. And what you'll see are the areas that are outlined in light to dark blue are areas where the rates of this particular PQI of diabetes short-term complications are as much as five times as high as the county average for this. So this is a way of pointing us to what specific sub-geographic areas, where there are, are health inequities concentrated, and where we can better target our interventions to reduce the demand for treatment of preventable conditions in our emergency rooms. These are the kinds of analyses we're doing in a number of the communities that are part of the National League of Cities efforts, as well as partnerships we have in other states. So I'm going to, I want to move towards the end by just focusing specifically in a new and growing area for hospitals to leverage their assets. And that is in the form of healthcare investment. And so what we have in that arena, in this area are, these are examples of ways in which hospitals are leveraging a portion of their investment portfolio, sometimes also providing grants, direct contributions, sometimes making land available at a, for donation or lease to help support a variety of different forms of the local economic development in these communities. And doing so in a way that really helps achieve the kinds of goals increasingly that municipalities are establishing for themselves. Again, I'm going to move quickly on this because I know this will probably be an important point of discussion. I want to note, this is, this is discussed most recently in an article that just came out in the Stanford Social Innovation Review. The whole concept of establishing neighborhood trusts where you create an opportunity, first, to avoid displacement of low-income populations, but, but even more importantly, to give them an opportunity to buy into, an opportunity to get returns on investment themselves. This idea of creating this trust where you create a mechanism to pool small-level investments, let's, they could be 10 to 50 to $100 each, where, where low-income residents can buy shares in property that's acquired and can be subsequently developed for significant returns to those individuals. You'll see there are examples in play in Cleveland, Minneapolis, Memphis, and Kansas City. So it's, it's definitely worth exploring. ProMedica is maybe the highest-profile example is the regional system in northern Ohio and southern Michigan. They located their corporate headquarters in a part of the inner city in Toledo and really looking at ways in which to leverage their investment portfolio, including the purchase of a grocery store, establishment of a new grocery store, this training center, working with one of our largest community development financial institutions in the, in the country, LIST, to do this. They've also established a national organization called the Root Cause Coalition that brings together hospitals and health systems around moving this agenda. This is a smaller-scale example, but one that's become increasingly of importance to hospitals as we look at the growing number of homeless people in our communities. This was an outgrowth of a convening we had at the Boston Fed about four years ago. Brought together teams, hospital leaders, and community development groups, in this case, University of Vermont Health Network. After this session, came together with a local community development corporation, acquired an old motel and converted it into, basically, to apartments for people that were otherwise homeless, and provide them with a wrap, an array of wraparound services, training, counseling, and channeling them to ultimately affordable housing as it became available. UVHN documented about a savings of about $1 million a year just in the first two years from, from the development of this. So all of this is around, is the growing area of medical respite. How do we stop? How do we stop the cycle of homeless people in and out of our emergency rooms and provide them with a path for greater stability and support? And at the same time, there's a clear return on investment for all involved. Last couple slides I just wanna leave you with is the way in which we're beginning to increasingly think broadly about what hospitals and health systems can contribute. They can use their leverage around procurement, both to, to support local businesses and in many ways to provide, to build local capacity, to help start minority firms and help, help them on their ways, to invest in healthcare pathways for, for young people who are underrepresented, including youth that may be just as involved, looking at ways in which, which they can reduce their carbon footprint, be in the realm of advocacy and engaging local, local policymakers in how to address these broader issues that are beginning to impact healthcare in a negative way. I've talked about the issue of investment, and a lot of the work we're engaged in, in Spokane and others, is how can we be more specific and focused in specific low-income neighborhoods of Spokane? The last slide is just to highlight, as I've engaged and continue to engage board members and hospital leaders around the country on this issue, is, is making the case that they need to have members of their C-suite, of their senior leadership team, not just their lobbyists, not just their public affairs officer, but senior leadership engaged in understanding what's in the comprehensive plan of the city in which they, they're involved. Do they serve on the United Way Board? Are they engaged with the Chambers of Commerce? How are we thinking about ways in which to leverage the assets of our healthcare stakeholders? So, I'm gonna stop there, and I just wanted to tee up a frame for how we are engaged with the council member and your colleagues in looking at how to move this agenda. Thank you.
All right, I saw Councilmember Cathcart, I saw his hand. I'm not gonna necessarily see everyone's hand, so feel free to just volunteer after he asks his question.
Yeah, two, two questions for you. One is, if, if we, I guess, push for or require hospitals to, to do a lot of these things, you know, does that not create added costs on them that's gonna get passed on in the form of, of what they charge for medical care? And then also, in terms of citing some of these housing, for, for those experiencing homelessness around the hospitals, does that not encourage them to be utilizing the hospital for medical care, which is the most expensive, you know, place to get that care?
So, let me address your first question. First of all, I'm, I'm not suggesting requiring or browbeating hospitals. The good news is increasingly there's voluntary leadership among hospitals to look at ways in which to work together to address these issues. And doing so, as it relates to the Medicaid shortfalls I, I outlined earlier, this is an area, clear area for collaboration, both across sectors and across competitive lines. Hospitals that may be otherwise competing for commercially insured populations should be willing to look at ways in which to reduce the demand for treatment of preventable conditions in the Medicaid population. Those are the contracts that are increasingly in the form of risk-based reimbursement. So there's a clear financial incentive to reduce the volume of those kinds of visits going forward. So, so all this is about looking at where we are in the trajectory of moving towards, moving from volume-based reimbursement, basically fee-for-service, to various forms of risk-based reimbursement, and how do we work with hospitals to address the drivers of poor health? How do we work with them to reduce the demand for treatment in their emergency rooms? Now, addressing your second question, the way in which utilization occurs, particularly in the emergency rooms, is hospitals that tend to be located, obviously more proximal to low-income communities, tend to have a much larger number of those individuals coming into their emergency room. And they come into their emergency room because that's, that, they know that the hospitals are required to provide those services, and of course, they don't have a primary care physician or some other form of care that could address their issues in a more proactive way. I think if you're addressing the issue of whether or not a hospital might donate adjoining land for affordable housing, is that, is that the crux of your question?
Well, we, we just hear all the time of just how expensive it is to, to serve folks in the emergency room, and usually there's much cheaper options with off-site clinics and things like that. And if you're gonna mix, it, it's just my thinking out loud here, but if you're gonna mix medical facilities and housing, it seems like you'd wanna make sure that it's, it's gonna be the most cost-effective, you know, form of medical treatment. And if emergency rooms are so expensive, then wouldn't you wanna cite that, the housing, you know, around off-site clinics and not the hospital per se?
Yeah, and I, I think in most cases, the additional land that hospitals might have is not right next to the emergency room, is, is in other areas. But I, but the point being, yes, what we wanna do is to expand access to, to primary care and preventive services for people. And, and that mostly does not occur, although a growing number of hospitals are establishing urgent care centers so they can at least channel people out of the emergency room and, and into those centers. But we're still, we are still struggling. I, I was just, had a conversation with the CEO of one of our larger Medicaid managed care plans in central California a couple weeks ago, and I asked him if he knew how many of his approximately 400,000 enrollees were homeless. And he said, "You know, I don't." And moreover, we only have meaningful data for about 20% of our Medicaid enrollees. And, and part of that is because we haven't, our orientation is, is how to provide acute care and not ways in which to reach out and meet people where they are to provide the kind of care through teams of community health workers and through addressing some of these drivers of poor health. So, my preference would always be, how do we, let's start with looking at most of the care that we provide in the emergency room as being forms of care and high expenditures that we can and should avoid by providing earlier, earlier access to the full spectrum of services. But we have a lo, a long way to go. We've, we've built this grand edifice that is focused on downstream medical care instead of investing on creating the conditions under which people can be healthy.
Counsel President, I have a question.
Yes, Councilmember Kinnear.
This was a great presentation. Thank you so much. Some of the things that you presented, we are already doing, some of the things are, are issues and solutions that we've looked at. I was especially interested in the, the rehab of an old, old motel because I've been talking about that for two years, and people are just nodding at me going, "Yeah, yeah, that's, that sounds great," but nothing's really happened.
Mm-hmm.
And, at this, this slide right here, under Food Policy Councils, we established a Food Policy Council four or five years ago at the city level, and it broke off from the city and it's now its own thing, so we don't have a lot of communication. We have a, we have a community garden program. So there are all these things we're doing, but they're not really coordinated towards a common goal or a common end product that I see you're presenting here. So, thank you for tying it all together. Is there a way that you could send us a copy of this presentation, or is it proprietary?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Absolutely.
Great, that would be wonderful. Thank you.
And you'll have it in a way, you can, you can mix and match and use slides however you want. I'm interested in looking at how we can move the field, so.
This is great, thank you.
You bet.
Counsel President, this is Karen, I have a question.
Yes, Councilmember Stratton.
So, one of the things that I've been thinking about for a very long time, and this fits right into it, except where, except my mind goes to bringing in higher education. In a community like Spokane, I just, like where we live, and we have University of Washington Dental, we have WSU Medical, we have these universities, we have community colleges training, that at some point, it would be, and I don't know if it's happened, but, but a reach out to the higher ed community to sit down in these discussions to partner on some of these programs. If it's training students or students that have to do practicums or students that need certain credits to, to graduate, it would seem to me that that would be a natural fit. And also on the data side, if you had faculty that could really dig deep into the poverty and homelessness, deep root causes of that. So, I agree, this is a great presentation, but my mind went right to the group, in my mind, that's missing is how do we draw in higher ed to build this up a little bit? Because I think there's a lot of resources there that, that we just haven't, haven't touched yet.
Councilmember, I'm so glad that you said that, and you, you've tapped into another deep passion of mine. I, I had the great privilege of serving as a member of the Institute Medicine Committee that produced the report in 2004 on increasing diversity in the health professions. And an important question, the reason I was asked, because of the community benefit research that I was doing at the time, was the basic question, can and should we expect health profession's education institutions to do more than wring their hands and say the pool of diverse qualified applicants isn't big enough? Shouldn't they be reaching out and engaging and providing opportunities and investing in the next generation of youth in our low-income communities so they have the opportunity to get that education? Now, we need to start early on, on that. Certainly, the discussion in the current administration about investing in early childhood education is critical. We have, in California, we've had a, the first five commission in place now for over a decade, and we still have over 30% of our population, and obviously, it's the low-income 30%, that don't have access to early childhood education. And so they start out behind the curve at the very beginning and almost never catch up. So, so it's, so that's important. And I, and I would, I'd go to the other piece that you mentioned, which is, as we, one of the most important ways that we engage hospitals and health systems is say, "Hey, we know this is not, this is not just your job. These problems are deep, they're historical, and they're complex, and it requires us all to link arms." And I would say, just as we can and should expect that our nonprofit hospitals, and particularly our larger health systems, to invest a portion of their investment portfolio. Providence has staked this area out, they provide a great leadership in this arena as well. We need to bring others into this, including our universities, because they also have significant investment portfolios that they can leverage. We're having these conversations going in this direction a number of other years, but it's an important way to ensure that the hospitals see this isn't just about getting into their pockets.
Any other council questions? So, I just wanted to note, several years ago in Cleveland, the hospitals and the universities banded together to support worker-owned cooperatives, more as in economic development. But I think the lesson I'm hearing from you is that, that's good, but what you're saying is because we're moving away from fee-for-service to simply per capita payments, it's actually cheaper for hospitals to invest in housing now, and cheaper to invest in economic development in low-income communities because it's just gonna cost them less, because they have to pay for, they have to provide the service for whatever the health needs are, and they're not getting any more money necessarily. So, it's really pulling, pulling all of that together, and I'm just wondering if you wanted to make a comment about the Evergreen Cooperatives in, in Cleveland. Spokane seems like a much smaller version of Cleveland, but very similar feeling and grit-wise, so.
Yeah, I think, I think the work that Cleveland Clinic and, oh, I'm sorry, was somebody, I was asking somebody else. Okay.
No, no, I was talking to you, yep.
Okay, okay. So, yeah, I think what Cleveland Clinic and university health system did is, is notable. My question was, at the same time they were investing in local economic development, they were building a billion-dollar steel-and-glass tower that I'm not sure they're gonna need in, in the long run. Part of, part of the dynamic in healthcare is, we, we really do have to question our model and approach to development historically. They may be already regretting their investment in that large facility. I know many other hospitals that are now looking at these large facilities and wondering how they should be making their investments. But I do think that, you know, they contributed in the early stage of thinking more along the lines of this anchor institution approach, and that, that is where we wanna go. I do wanna emphasize, though, that as we talk about hospitals getting involved in investment, it's important to meet them where they are, and that's why I gave emphasis to this issue of preventable ED and inpatient utilization. That, that, we need to help understand and build the return on investment case at the institutional level, and then particularly in the context of municipalities, what's the broader social return on investment? What are ways in which we reduce the demand on law enforcement, on, on, on social services, on array of the demands that we, we're grappling with at this juncture through more proactive and strategic investment?
Yeah. All right, great. So, I've lost track of who the next speaker is, but someone can remind me, so, whoever you are, introduce yourself.
It's Sarah Clement-Samson from Providence.
Yeah. All right. Welcome, Sarah.
Hello, hello, and I think I, I know many of you. I'm the Community Health Investment Manager for Providence Healthcare in Eastern Washington and Montana, focused largely on Spokane and Stevens County. And let me see if I can share my screen. See, are you all seeing that? Oops, are you seeing that all right?
So far, it's loading, but we just have a gray square on, on black. Now, I see it now. See your title page.
Okay. So, so, yes, that's me, that's who we are. I think a lot of you know, we primarily see the, in Spokane, it's Sacred Heart, Holy Family. And then I will touch on Mount Carmel and St. Joseph's up in Stevens County, and I'll give you a little bit of that in a minute. These were the questions I was asked to touch on, so I hope I fulfill that as much as I can. As, I believe it's Kevin, wasn't that right, was saying, you know, this, we view community benefit really as this intersection between our government entities and the community as well as ourselves. Community benefits are the programs and services designed to improve health in communities and increase access to health care. There are miserable contributions made by nonprofit hospitals to improve the overall health and well-being of our local communities. The Patient Protection and Affordable Care Act, which was passed in 2010, made community benefit requirements into law, but before that, that was largely, these were largely best practices. Providence, we view these as essential to our mission. Our sisters went out and did this. They went out to assess the needs in the community and then figure out how to address them. And that's largely how we view this to this day, and we continue, and we continue to support it. The good of it being made into law is that it helps standardize what is considered community benefit. You know, both for local, state, federal government agencies all wanna know whether, you know, to get down to the bare meat of it, whether we deserve our tax benefit status. So this really helps us tell our story in a standardized way. It also helps us report internally and then to external, all external stakeholders. We utilize the Catholic Health Association as our baseline, as our, our guidelines. They have worked with IRS for a number of years to solidify what, what should count, what shouldn't count, what are these definitions, what is this work? And as Kevin said, I just wanna give kind of an update. This is our 2020 numbers, and as he mentioned, a large portion of it is this Medicaid shortfall. I do wanna emphasize that these are costs, not charges. So these are the costs to us, not necessarily, as Councilmember Cathcart said, you know, those large, large charges that we see within the community that we have to kind of make up our bottom line, what we report out are our costs. So it is our shortfall for, and that, so with, considering PHC is the two counties, it is Spokane and Stevens County, large percentage of that is Sacred Heart, but we do include also St. Luke's Rehabilitation Institute as well into these numbers. So our charity care, just so that you're aware, aware as well, so all people are eligible for us to write off some of their bill up to 350% of the federal poverty level. We tend to do a stair, a sliding scale fee up until 200% of federal poverty level. So if your income matches that, you know, we work with you to either sign you up with Medicaid, or we will work on forgiving that, and that's what we count as our charity care. Our subsidized services, I'll get into these in a little bit, but they really aren't, they aren't for market share, they aren't to bring people into our aren't for market share, they aren't to bring people into our doors. These are services that we provide at a loss when we take out charity care, when we take out Medicaid shortfall, when we take out bad debt, but we feel they are integral to our community. If we didn't provide them, our community would suffer. And as was mentioned, education and research. We are identified as a federally recognized health professional shortage area in primary care, mental health, and dental. And so any of those areas that we can help get more people into those fields would be a bonus to us. And so there is a cost to us, there is a cost in terms of we pay some of our residency salaries, you know, and that isn't necessarily, you know, these people are learning, and we want to encourage them to learn, we want them to encourage to stay here, we want to encourage them to come to our rural communities up in Stevens County and areas like that. And we, we need more. And so how can we create more of these pathways exactly? I think it was Councilmember, should it be me or Stratton, was talking about, you know, our education and how can we bridge those gaps? And those are things that we, we want to look at. And then our community programs and services, and this is where we have our $3 million in donations that we give out to the community each year, along with education that we provide to the community, any staff time that we are saying, this is important for us, and we will take on that cost so that they can be out in the community providing all of that. I want to touch on these, these are some of our subsidized services. As was mentioned by Councilmember Kaffcar, kind of that, that housing situation, that's one reason that we moved the House of Charity Clinic outside of the House of Charity so that we can partner better with the housing units that Catholic Charities is putting up, be more external so that someone isn't really connected to, to a shelter to be able to get our care. And this is really in place so those that are denied care at CHAZ, we will not deny their care. They come to us at, at any place, we do, we don't make money off of that. Same with our pediatric oncology. If we didn't provide that, you would either have to go to Minneapolis or Seattle. There is no other pediatric oncology place anywhere near here. And that's one reason that we include physical therapy up in Stevens County, because those are the only physical therapy, that's only access to low, low income people have the physical therapy if they want any kind of care. The only other ones are, you have to have private insurance, and so these will take Medicaid and charity care. And then, as was mentioned, our, the Providence Dental Residency Clinic, and that was based off of our needs assessment that we polled of our homeless population and the need for that. And so we have that dental residency, plus we have the clinic. I know there's one at Sacred Heart where, I think we're still working on opening the one up at Holy Family, but that'll hopefully, and I think it is, it's in connection with CHAZ, I believe. And, you know, opening up more of those beds and being able to get more upstream. And then one that we're looking at subsidizing this year is the Maxillofacial Clostric Lip Program that was housed at the Health District, has been independent and operated by some volunteers for, for a number of years now, and we're looking at bringing that internal. And again, for that same reason with the pediatric oncology, is if we don't provide it, then you have to go to Seattle as the closest one. And as was mentioned, we have an obligation to do a community needs assessment every three years and a community health improvement plan. We are in the midst of that needs assessment right now, and I'll let Steve talk about that in a second, because we are partnering with the Health District. But this is really, we have some, some requirements within the 990 of who are we reaching out to, how are we partnering with the community, how are we really getting the community voice? And, you know, really identifying and having the community prioritize, what are those needs? And that's where we've really seen that shift into social determinants of health. Community isn't necessarily going to put diabetes up, but they're going to put poverty, they're going to put food shortage up as a top need that they're dealing with. And then the Community Health Improvement Plan is our way of interpreting that. And so when the community says, housing, what does that mean for Providence? And we have that opportunity to say, well, what is it that we are going to get into? Are we really going to get into building and managing housing? Or are we going to support some of those agencies that are doing that work, and how can we better support them? You know, some of those things may come up as, this isn't the case, but I just want to kind of paint the picture, may come up as mental health, and we might say, well, there's a behavioral health hospital, let them be the experts and do that. We want to, we, we recognize mental health is a huge issue, and so that is one that we are taking on. But we have that kind of ability to be able to say, this isn't in our area versus what is in our area, and how are we going to address that? And so I, I really view these two as, the needs assessment is taking the voice of the community, and then it's the external piece of it, and the Community Health Improvement Plan is really the internal, how are we going to do this? How are we going to address these issues? And hopefully in partnership with the community. And then we are in the midst of our community, our community health needs assessment right now, with, like I mentioned, in partnership with the Health District, so I'll let Steve kind of have some say about it. What do you want to, what do you want to say about it?
Well, thanks, Sarah. Yes, we are really excited to partner with Providence and this year Multi-Care and Empire Health Foundation to complete the 2021 Community Health Needs Assessment. So we have just kicked this off in the past month or so. We are currently in the midst of collecting and analyzing data, including, I'll go over the indicators here in a little bit, but our intent is to pull both those population level health indicators that we can, as well as look at voice of the community type level data, including our quality of life survey that went out in 2020. We're in the midst of a LGBTQ plus community health survey, as well as some other just reviews of behavioral health and COVID data as well. Once we complete that part and kind of in tandem, we are going to go into focus groups with a large, broad swath of members of the community and community groups, which we're also hoping to propose to you all as a potential to contribute to one of those, as well as individual key informant interviews. The intent of the CHNA is to be done by July, so it's a pretty rapid timeline, but we are excited to get going. Just a little more information on what we are reviewing as far as data, so we kind of have it in these large groups. The first would be descriptions of the community, so that is both your demographics, as well as some of the social determinants of health, you know, housing, poverty, food security, education, income. We will look at leading causes of death, levels of chronic illness, access to health care and use of preventative services, mental health and substance use, maternal and child health, physical activity, nutrition, weight, violence and injury prevention, as well as, again, the quality of life, the LGBTQ plus survey, and other pieces of information that we have done primary data collection from, for the community. So that's my brief on that, but we are excited to get going here.
And then, so, so what we are currently working off of is our 2018 needs assessment. And so those were identified as decreased family violence and trauma, increased access to mental health, mental health and substance abuse treatment, and increased access to affordable housing. And I also want to bring up Stevens County, because as, one of the data points that we look at is what is our discharge percentage? And actually, one of the top discharge, like zip code percentage is 99114, which is tall though, I believe. And so we are affected by these, these communities that are, that surround us, and we recognize that. So theirs up there is Support for Youth and Families, Continuing Care for the Aging Population, and Access to Care. And some of the accomplishments around each of these, these are just a few. We've done, we have numerous efforts under each of these needs, but these are just a few. And so as a result, for the YWCA, we have a, we partnership with them, where we're working on kind of addressing the domestic violence issues that we see in the hospital right away. And as a result of the contact with the hospital and court-based advocacy project, 80% or more of the identified domestic violence victims created strategies for enhancing their safety. We partnered with the Health District and with Women Helping Women Fund to get that report out, and we really like data and the reports going out, because then, like, like as was mentioned, we can all be working on the same information and be citing the same source, and hopefully start gearing ourselves and driving in the same direction as many of these agencies look at this information. We recognize that, you know, child abuse rates, we are the children's hospital, they are going to come to us at the worst. And so how can we, domestic violence, all those sort of things, how can we get more upstream so that we don't even see them? Because ultimately, that would be the best, is, because we don't want to see them, that's, it's, it's the worst, it's heart wrenching, it's horrible. So how can we partner with others to get those services, those foundations in place that we don't even need to come to the hospital? In terms of mental health and substance abuse, we have a lot of internal efforts just around better transition of care, how can we outreach, how can we do some of these things? But these are a few of our specific efforts external. And so we have, one of the, we pulled our data because we, we contribute to the information around the suicide rate. And so the information that we are able to contribute is what's considered self-harm. So we pulled our data, and the top zip code to come to one of our hospitals and have self-harm within their medical record was the 99208 zip code. So looking at kind of the swath of everything, and this is youth, you know, we're really focusing on youth, we partnered with the MEED School District, with MEED High School, and helped them prevent, and along with D W U Sociology Staff, or School of Social Work Staff, to really train up their, their teachers and staff in the Mental Health First Aid Program, create a stepped-up model before they get to the threat assessment, which is when they, when a student actually makes a claim of harm to self or others, and, you know, everyone comes in at that time. But how can we identify those pieces earlier and get some of those kids earlier, regardless of their ability to pay? Because as many of you may know, the, the counselors that are within the schools really can only address Medicaid, they have a cap of about 30, that they, caseload of about 30 that they can handle. So this was really the, how can we get some of those teachers talking that know these students? And then also give the, the teachers and staff resources. We have resources in town, but as we were doing some of our listening sessions, they didn't know how to access those resources. And so how can we better streamline that and bridge that within our community? Many of you know about the Frontier Behavioral Health, Behavioral Response Unit that the police provide, and I believe they get that through True Blood Fund. We provide funding for the fire department. And so no matter who's getting called by 911, whoever's getting, goes out first, whether it's the fire department, EMTs, or the police department, there's someone there from, there is a potential for someone there from Frontier to be able to assist, and to be able to, exactly as I was saying, can we get them into better service that doesn't have to come to the hospital? Can we get them into more appropriate service and people that are trained in that versus in our emergency room where we're just going to kind of cycle them through the way we, we do with all, all of the things that are coming at us? So that's a great partnership, and that's provided a lot of success. And then increased access to affordable housing. The Homeless Respite Program actually came out of the city, and the city, I sit on the city, I don't know why you renamed it now, but it was the Community Housing and Human Services, RFP and Evaluation Committee. And from that, years ago, there was an opportunity for the city to get a HUD grant on showing how homelessness, those that were experiencing homelessness are able to get into permanent housing from services, and any of those services, whether it was the jail, whether it was social services, whether it was the hospital. And at that time, we didn't have a process, but it was kind of percolating and starting to talk about, like, what do we do with some of our homeless patients that come to us and really don't need to be there anymore, but they need someplace to heal? They need someplace to store medicine, you know? How are you supposed to address your diabetes if you don't have a refrigerator? Where are you going to put your insulin? So we worked with Catholic Charities and established this homeless respite program. And at the beginning, the city actually paid for bed, because it was, once they were done with the acute healing and the acute need, but maybe there was still a waitlist for them to get into housing, then they would go, move, be moved into that bed so that we still had them, we still could have contact with them, we still had access to them before we could get them into permanent housing. I believe the, the city had to cut that funding, but we continue to work on that. And the impetus around our respite program, it wasn't around the return on investment for us, it was around the appropriate care for this person. And by partnering with the agencies, the Catholic Charities and Volunteers America, they can use their case managers to access behavioral health, substance abuse treatment, housing, primary care, any of those things that we, that are, what the person may view as, as their barrier to the next step, to how, if it's housing, if it, whatever that stability is for them, they can develop that relationship, and this was an avenue to help create that. Because when you're facing illness and you finally get a chance to take away that chronic stress of where am I going to eat next, where am I going to live, you can start thinking about the next thing. What is that next thing that really is harming you? And that you want to, want to address? Then we can start getting people more stable. And we're in the process right now with Family Promises to develop a family respite program. One of the worst things is we don't want families to, to be separated because of a medical issue and because they're experiencing homelessness. So is there, you know, a facility, a space, that they could have that roof, access to, to a kitchen, access to a bathroom, and let their family member heal? One of the most heart wrenching things was, we had, it was in our hospital, we had a young person who was facing cancer, needed to go through chemotherapy, but they were homeless. And so CPS removed them from their home, put them in foster care because they didn't have that stable living environment. So not only did this youth have trauma from being homeless, trauma from cancer, now trauma from being separated from their family. So we want to make sure that that, that is not a reason for separating, and so we're working with Family Promises to, to create that. And I think, well, I think it's getting off the ground this year. We've given them the funding, and it's just a matter of kind of find, the communication between around what, what, what will be accepted, what are the guidelines, getting everyone onto those, same kind of, the same communication path. So I think those are, those are just a few. We have many more, like I mentioned, there's about $3 million that we give out every year to address these issues. So there's much more, and always we have to include that in our needs assessment. And so with that, I, I'll leave it for questions.
Sarah, Councilmember Wilkinson here. Thank, thank you, and as the newest council member, that was really good for me. I guess my challenge is, in my short time, is as a city, we've made some partnerships, but we operate in silos, so we continue to address our homeless unhoused problems. Who should we be inviting from City Council to the table to help be part of this conversation? Because I still feel we're missing some people at the table to help us solve some of these issues.
Just within Providence or just in general?
We'll start with y'all first, but in general.
Well, I always like to include our social workers, just because I really think that they, they are the first line for any of our patients, especially our low income or, or homeless patients, really addressing that need. We are, we have some efforts around disparities and health equity disparities, and so as that grows and what that looks like, you know, bringing in those community health workers, bringing in those people that are very focused in those populations, would be good to get the, you know, to help bridge that voice within the community. We've started actually in terms of housing, and I think, I'm excited to get that meeting on the calendar with you, that, Councilmember Wilkinson. Yeah, we are partnering with Carl Maxey Center, because under prior to Spokane, there was some evidence shown around flexible spending. And so we are partnering with Carl Maxey Center, because there's a group that's working on, it's a black owned business that's working on uplifting BIPOC community members into housing ownership. But a lot of times, they have to rent in between, there's some things, a car goes out. You know, who, are you going to pay the few hundred dollars to be able to get your car fixed, so you can go to work, so you can continue to work, so you can make that, and then you might have to miss a rent payment? Well, if we have this flexible spending within Carl Maxey Center, we could help someone, give them that leg up to be able to do that. And so we're looking at some of those agencies, the grassroots efforts that are really in with their communities to, to look at addressing these issues, because we can put housing up, we can put buildings up, but you really need to have that support system with them. And what does that community look like? What does that support look like for, for these people, which, you know, that may look different than my community, or what I would presume. And I can't assume, I can't presume to think that what I would want would be the same as other people. Does that answer your question? So I'm saying, getting with the grassroots efforts is some of those people.
And, and I appreciate the investment of Providence into these smaller organizations to help them build capacity to do that work. I think that's critical, not only from the hospital perspective, but as from the city also, as the things that we're looking at doing, we don't have to do it all, but how do we help stand up the organizations that are doing that work already? So yes, meetings coming.
Yes, and that's one of the things that I like to kind of put out there, is we are very blessed as a community that we have Providence funds to tap into, because that's exactly what I look at, is oftentimes there's restrictions around what, the, the funding that comes through, and that's one reason I sit on that RFP committee, is to know why are, are they And that's one reason I sit on that R F P committee, is to know why are things getting denied? Or why are things? This is, then I can step in with, hey, I could help fill this gap until the city could come in, or until we can get this additional funding. But I can, or I can fund this that isn't available through this funding that the federal government or the state government has said this could only go to X, Y, and Z. Then we can, we can work to help build the whole picture and not just some of these pieces.
Councilmember Stratten.
I would just ask, as conversations continue, and when we get to the piece of the very important problem of homelessness that we're seeing everywhere, I would hope that that conversation could include a sit-down with the city, because we're constantly trying to find solutions. We put a lot of Band-Aids out there, but we're not making any headway. It includes the city, the hospitals, and higher ed. Because I think those groups together could build a program, an overarching program, utilizing students, utilizing research. It would take money, but I think we're not going to solve that problem unless the big players get together around a table and discuss what strengths we have to bring to the table. And to me, that sits with healthcare, higher ed, and the city. And what we can build, I, I think there's some really possibilities, there's some real possibilities there. So I would just hope if, if we start focusing on homeless, that those, those, I would love to be involved in that, because it's something that I've thought about for a long time. And I want the Jensen Bird Building, just to throw that out there, because could you imagine what we could do with the Jensen Bird Building for a one-stop resource, everything for people there? But I do think we need to have those conversations, because we're not, we're not making a difference until we really put our heads together and our resources together to see what we can do as a community to help those people living on the streets get safe and housed.
I'm all in, yes. Definitely.
Any other questions for Sarah? All right. Thanks, Sarah, for spending some time with us. Melissa, who's next?
The last one we had was Helene Dewey from the Spokane Regional Department, the Health Equity Specialist.
Well, welcome, Helene. It's great to see you again.
Nice to see everybody, and thank you for the invite. So Council President Beggs and city council members, again, thank you. And for those of you, I think there might be a couple of folks that I've not met. My name is Helene Dewey, and I am the Health Equity Specialist here at the Spokane Regional Health District. And can, nobody could see my screen here. So I'm just going to go through really how we look at health equity here at the Spokane Regional Health District, and what we, kind of the framework that we utilize, and just kind of connect the dots hopefully for a few folks. Okay. Can everybody see my screen there?
We see it.
Perfect. So I just wanted to get us on some common ground, just to start. First, just, I'm sure you guys have seen this slide, but really just wanting to reiterate the difference between equity versus inequality. And I like bikes, there's that too. But really, when we talk about equity, we just want to make sure that, that folks are getting the services and the resources that they need that are specific to their specific, their unique needs. And when we talk about what creates health, there are many factors. And I think there's a lot of, this is where we have maybe sometimes misunderstanding about what creates health. And I think in society, there might be a, the very large value that it's a very individualistic thing, that if people just did the right behavior, they'll have the best health. And what we do know is that there are certain things that, there are socioeconomic factors, access to healthcare, their genetics, and their environment can also impact their health. And I want to lead this conversation in a way that we have been leading the conversations around health equity for the last several years. And we lead the conversation with race. And when we look at the, all of our past community health needs assessment, we have disparities, and we have disparities by race. And with this, this next community health needs assessment, we will disaggregate the data, and more than likely, unfortunately, we will see those disparities. But what I want to reiterate, that those racial disparities persist in every single system without exception. In every single system, in every single sector, we are calling it something different. We call it child welfare, or in child welfare, we call it disproportionality. In education, we call it the achievement gap. In economic development, historically underutilized businesses, we are calling it something different, but it's in every single sector. And when we look at racism and how it creates and impacts health outcomes, you heard Kevin talk a little bit about allostatic load, easily, more easily said, chronic stress or toxic stress. But when we look at racism on the top, and we could add any ism, whether it's sexism, classism to this, it leads to different access to resources and living conditions, which can impact, it adds chronic stress. And that chronic stress has pretty specific biological changes. There is new research around epigenetic changes. And that's when we have the altering of physical structure within our DNA, DNA methylation, when exposed to trauma or chronic stress. And then again, allostatic load, that, that chronic stress, that toxic stress that's always there when we face discrimination. And that ultimately leads to those health inequities, poor health outcomes, which some communities have disproportionate outcomes from. And in the vein of COVID, I just want to highlight too, that what we saw with COVID is that some communities that had certain comorbidities also had higher risk for severe illness or death from COVID. And this is a model that we've been using. We've adopted this from the Bay Area Regional Health Inequities Initiative, a lot of public health departments across the nation have. And this just really shows that kind of upstream, downstream type model. And what we have here is that we show the very classic medical model, where we have, we know that there are certain behaviors that can lead to certain disease and injury states, which ultimately leads to a certain type of mortality. And what we used to do is, in health, in public health, we were like, well, we just want people to have the best behavior. So we educate them on how to be more physically active, on how to eat healthy, and what, or not to smoke. But we, what we know now is that there are factors, certain living conditions, that play into impacting those behaviors. And that's where we get into that socio-ecological model, or kind of that upstream, if you will. And so what it says is that we have social inequities, our neighborhoods, residential segregation, our workplaces, that are created and decisions are made within certain institutions, whether they're private, public. And those decisions sometimes are made with our beliefs, right? Our biases, narratives that we have about certain folks or certain communities. And so this also just shows how, what we can do to impact those. So ultimately, biased beliefs, those decisions, those narratives, those harmful narratives can lead to policies and practices that create inequities, that create neglected communities, which impact our behavior, our disease state, and ultimately, our death. And we need to be impacting every single level of the stream, right? We still need emergency rooms, we still need clinics, we still need to educate folks on unhealthy behaviors. But what we also need to do is start looking at how do we share power with communities? How do we get communities most impacted by inequities to the table? It's been said so many times this last year, that the folks who are impacted the most are also closest to the solutions. And so how do we get folks to the table to better understand what those solutions are? And how do we ensure that our policies and partnerships are equity-based, that promote equity and are anti-racist? And then how do we change those conversations? Again, the harmful narratives that we hold about certain communities, that in some cases can inform our decisions, sometimes explicitly, but also implicitly. And I wanted to share this, I haven't shared this that much, but this really just shows what that, that upstream and downstream looks like in regards to COVID. What we saw nationally with COVID is that we had communities that were disproportionately impacted, so here in the downstream. We had certain racial and ethnic groups, African-American, Latinx, Native American, Pacific Islander, folks who are undocumented, folks with limited English proficiency, people with, living with disabilities, and people experiencing homelessness. And when we start to go more upstream and to ask those why, well, they developed COVID. And why did they develop COVID? And so this is where we're really looking at, well, what are those behaviors? We put out public health guidance. We wanted folks to maintain that six-foot distance, avoid crowds, wear masks, wash hands, quarantine if exposed, test if you think you're exposed, isolate if positive, and getting, get vaccinated ultimately. And what we're finding is that it's, it's very difficult for folks to follow this, if there are systems and structures in place that make it difficult to do so. And that's where we get into the living conditions. And as elected officials and folks in other sectors, if we look at these living conditions, and if we wanted to circle every single factor, living condition that came into play with COVID, I think it's safe to say we can circle every one of these, right? Transportation, housing, food insecurity, experiences of discrimination, employment, income, healthcare, education, et cetera, childcare. What we found when we were doing care coordination, case investigation, is that a lot of our staff was really focusing on getting folks to, to be able to follow public health guidance. If they needed to isolate, they were having to address issues with transportation, with food insecurity, housing, childcare, et cetera. We had public health staff really working in these living conditions to put the Band-Aids on, right? And ultimately, the question is, how do we, how do we, how do we get to a point where we're stopping to put Band-Aids on these bleeds and really fix what those structures, what's creating the bleed? And then ultimately, if we ask the why, well, we have institutional inequities, we have policies and practices, procedures out there that might not be for everybody. And again, when we ask the next why, it's those inequities, is, again, the harmful narratives that we've, or assumptions that we have about communities, and what communities need. And thinking about what it looks like in practice in public health, Sarah had mentioned what our priorities were from the 2018 Community Health Needs Assessment, violence and abuse, mental health and housing. And this is an example, example of that upstream, downstream with family violence and trauma. When we look at those, those isms, those harmful narratives that, that folks have, assumptions that folks have, when it comes to domestic violence even, there are harmful narratives about perpetrators or victims of violence. Program and policy focus is often on women and not men. It's really what stories do we tell ourselves or others about people involved in sexual assault, child abuse, or domestic violence? And what are those, those systems? What are the policies that are in place that are making it really challenging for folks to access the services that they need to ultimately impact their health outcomes? And so it really is connecting the dots. So what do nondiscriminatory practices and policies look like? Societal changes in laws, conditions and systems that support health? And ultimately, how do we create safe and responsive environments through policies and systems change? Develop a positive social network of families and increase trauma-informed environments using the voice of clients? And I guess that's, that looks like all I have. And I actually did want to share very quickly, I'm going to stop sharing my screen here, if I could figure out how to do so. We often use a metaphor, if you will, on how to better understand what structural racism looks like and how it comes out to play. And so bear with me, I do have a link for this, but I'll share in the chat. And this is what we call the groundwater analogy. And if you, so say you have, you are a living lakefront, and you go outside your house one day, and there's a lake, and you see one fish floating belly up. Does it make sense to analyze that fish, or you're just like, a fish died, and that's really sad, right? Imagine the one fish is this one student failing in the education system. We'd ask, did it, did that student study hard enough? Did they get the support that they needed at home? Those are the types of questions if, if one of those fish ended up dead, or a student was failing the system. But if you come out of the same lake and half of the fish are floating belly up dead, what would, what's a question you're going to start asking? What's in the water, right? What's happening in the water to create that environment that half of those fish are belly up dead? Say the next day, you go outside, and you have several lakes around your home, and you see in every single lake, half of the fish are floating belly up dead. The question that we ask now is what's in the groundwater? What's in the groundwater that's feeding every one of those lakes that we're seeing the same disproportionate impact of fish? It's the same with structural racism. We have groundwater that's feeding every single, single one of our sectors, right? And it's really how do we start creating those narratives? And empowering communities to be part of the conversations about what those solutions are and what those policies look like. The example I like to give in regards to COVID is, in the beginning of June 2020, half, actually more than half, about 65% of our COVID positive cases were within the Pacific Islander community. And if we would have just sat down and think, we're really smart public health people, and we know what we need to do, we would have continued to have those rates. And we realized, and the specific Islander community came to us, and they were like, we need to do something. And so it was working with them to identify, what is it exactly that we need to do? We found out that language access was an issue. We found that they are COFA residents, they're, they have, there are certain policies that are put in place for even unemployment benefits. Normally, they can't accept federal benefits, but the unemployment benefit for COVID, they could. And they didn't know how to navigate the system. So we had folks going to work ill because they couldn't, otherwise, what would they do? So there's just so many things that I think, solutions that we may not be aware of, that having folks at the table is really important. And I think the opportunity here, when we look at our next Community Health Needs Assessment, and see those disparities in our health outcomes, and start connecting the dots and asking those whys, and then having those informed by the communities most impacted is really when we're going to start to see those solutions surface. And that's all I have. Thank you so much for your time, and we only have two minutes, and I apologize.
Any questions for Helene?
I just want to thank you, Helene, for that. So the challenge, I think, from council side is we hear so much community outcry. Well, if you would just put them in programs or treatment, that would be the solution to some of the challenges we face downtown. However, I have been sharing with general population that that just does not happen overnight, and that that system itself is under a lot of stress with its own capacity to meet the needs. And really, with the assessment, how our community could lean in to support expansions of those, because city doesn't do treatment programs, but we can help support and help legislate to improve capacity.
All right, thanks for that, Councilmember Wilkerson. Any other questions or comments for this panel? All right, then I will let all you visitors go. You can stay. We, we do have another topic, I don't think we're going to be able to do it justice today, but I do at least want to introduce it so that people can be thinking about it. And that is council administration strategic planning. Several of us in councils suggested a year ago, maybe even over a year ago, that a great way to create some alignment between the new mayoral administration and city council would be to undertake some type of strategic planning. would be to undertake some type of strategic planning. And at least four of us on council went through a strategic planning process with the upper levels of the Condon administration. I'm looking around and thinking, almost no staff people for council were part of that and three council members weren't part of that. So I was just going to give a little bit of my recollection of what our structure was and then invite maybe some initial comments of what people either want to see or don't want to see, because there is a kind of a little work group going with the administration on trying to figure out a process. So my recollection of several years ago was that we had, there was a planning group, I'm sure, originally. I was not part of that. I was a fairly new council member. But we had a, I don't know if it was a full day or three-quarters of a day, pretty big meeting with the mayor, the city administrator, and some of the top cabinet people, and then all of city council. We had a facilitator, Dr. Patrick Jones from E W U. And we just talked about what the really high elevation goals might be for the city in various sectors of the work that we all do. And we delved into both some specifics but also just some guiding principles that we agreed on. And we came up with quite a bit of common ground. And then there was a much smaller group, Councilmember Waldorf and Rick Romero, I know, were key to that. And they fleshed things out. And that's where we came up with our current four-committee structure. And then we had goals, really up to six years for each, organized by committee, and performance points. And we had dashboards and we had colors, green, yellow, and red as far as progress. And we designated a council member to chair each committee. And then we had a designated senior administrative lead. And they would work together on agendas for council meetings. And you can still see on our agendas kind of the vestiges of these areas that we're supposed to be focusing on, that we rarely, we rarely put agenda items under those areas anymore, but they're still on our agendas. And that's what happened for a while. I will submit, my experience was that a lot of the work towards that strategic plan was focused on the last two years of the Condon administration. And so the longer-term things weren't really addressed as much and are kind of, I would say, floundering out there a little bit at this point. So that's, but we did accomplish many things. And I would say, and I'll leave it up to other council members who participated, I thought it was a high-water mark in terms of collaboration and feeling of being on the same page. So that was one reason I suggested to the new mayor that I think we should pursue that experience again. I'm sure it would be even better and more alignment and more collaboration. But right now, there is a small group, Eric Finch and Brian McClatchy and Lisa Gardner and I think Brian Cottington and maybe Brandy Cody are just kind of working a little bit on planning. And they're looking for some direction from us as a council of what we want to see. And so I'm going to just throw it open to comments, again, of what people hope they would see more of or less of, something they feel strongly about, one way or the other, just kind of from a high elevation that will give us some input. And then we'll schedule some more time together because we're a little bit over time. But I just wanted, because that planning group is meeting and I want to get them some earlier feedback than later. So I'll throw it open for anyone. Councilmember Kinnear.
Thanks. Councilmember Stratton and I were together and met with Eric and Brandy Cody, right? Was that it? Okay. It was not, it left me unfulfilled in terms of where we were going and the expectation. I think part of the problem is that the first time around, our strategic goals, our committee structure happened, was done but outside of the council process. We ultimately approved it, but I always felt kind of, I felt kind of strong-armed to do it a certain way. I felt that our committees were oftentimes hijacked and we weren't really able to put on what we needed, but it was more the administration taking over our committees. That was then. So fast forward, I'd like to get back to the core of what we do. Those committees are council committees. And we need to put on our agenda what we want to talk about, what's important to us. And I don't feel that that is happening right now. I feel a lot of times it is still driven by administration. And I was struggling, I talked with Karen after we were done. Chime in, please, Karen, because I just didn't feel like we were getting anywhere. Eric said several times, oh, this is going to be, help us with our budgeting. And I'm going, no, that's not what we should be doing this for. And so he was focused on budgeting. And I think, Karen, you and I were focused on how are we going to move forward with this strategic plan? And we just weren't getting anywhere. It was just, it needs somebody like a Patrick Jones or Rick Romero, somebody outside of the administration to pull this together if it's going to work. It can't have an administrative person in there trying to make us all sing kumbaya. It's just not going to work that way. So if we're going to pull this off, I think we need to bring in an outside person. I think we need to go back to the real crux of what we're trying to do as a council and that these are council committees and the why. Why are they council committees? And go from there. Or we just continue on the way we are, restructure our strategic goals because a lot of those just don't matter anymore. They never got done. They weren't ours in the first place. And maybe we just move on and do something else. So I left that meeting feeling a little disheartened. That's, so Karen, you're being quiet.
No, I was going to say, you've explained that very well. I felt the same way. I'm going to be really honest. I think sometimes we make things harder than they have to be. These are council committees. It's up to us to determine the issues, what's coming up, what we want to talk about. We're doing it, I mean, we always listen to staff. When staff comes up and they have something they want to talk about, we get those on our committees. But I just am frustrated because it doesn't feel like they're ours anymore. I'm okay with not agreeing with people, as long as we can agree professionally and with respect. I'm okay with that. And I think we're spending a lot of energy with this whole, Laurie said, kumbaya, but with this whole, you want everybody to know we all get along. I just want our committees to be ours. I mean, that's, to sit around and rehash this and to spend the time that we did before, I just, I don't have it in me. I mean, I just don't feel any ownership of what we're doing with these committees. And I'm sorry, that's kind of a big downer, but I felt that way for a long time and I tried to just kind of stay within what I feel comfortable with. But I just think they need to be ours and it's great that we're working together with the administration. It doesn't mean anything that we want to pull back a little bit, but if we're going to change something, do it soon because we've got to keep moving.
All right. Thanks. Councilmember Cathcart.
Yeah, I guess I don't really have the history with regard to the committees, but I would agree. I mean, there are committees, there are committees. I don't see why or how there should be interference. Certainly, if there's a good idea from anybody, regardless of what side of the seventh floor they're on. But to me, a bigot, not bigger, but a, it's just a frustration of mine, it'd be great to find some way forward on is, a lot of times when we are taking up various issues, the facts that are shared with me from each side of the seventh floor differ. And it would be great if we could find ways to all be on the same page with regard to what the facts on the ground are. We can have different outcomes, we can have different directions we want to go based on those facts, but it'd be great to have, not exactly sure the best way to try and achieve that, but I think if we could find a mechanism to do that, it'd be certainly helpful for me.
Yeah, that's a good point. Councilmember Mum.
I'm all for taking a fresh look at a strategic plan, but I'm also backing up Councilmember Kinnear and Councilmember Stratton in that these are definitely our committees and we need to design them. And I really don't need people to read PowerPoint presentations to me all day long. I would love to have a discussion with my own council members about things that we really need to make decisions on. There's so few meetings we have where we can all seven be in the room at the same time. And I just encourage all of us to have, make space for those dialogues in our meetings and maybe put more things on consent agendas and so we can have those good conversations, especially with COVID. We're not in the office where we can bump into each other and have conversations like we used to. So that would be my wish overall. But I do want to bring up the whole refresh of a strategic plan or kind of starting from scratch. I want to encourage us to say, we don't need to start from scratch. We have spent tens, if not hundreds of thousands of dollars on some fantastic plans that haven't been implemented. Let's start with a comprehensive plan. The water plan, the sewer plan, we have all these plans. That's what I think we should be talking about, how to get those done, because that's going to build our city. That's going to get what the citizens have been asking for. The citizens have engaged on these things. So I'm willing to participate in strategic plans, but let's bring those plans forward and meet with staff and say, we all decided on this a long time ago, let's get it done. And I think COVID put a pause on it. But I don't think it has to be a huge lift, kind of what you were saying, Councilmember Stratton, don't make it so hard. Let's look at what we said we were going to do. Let's talk about what's happening at Spokane Transit. I mean, my Lord, the money that's coming forward on that and the game changer for our community and building up those communities around those transit stops, we're not ready for that yet. What about the North-South Corridor and those off-ramps? Those communities are going to get hit hard with pressure. We're not ready for it. So I had a conversation with Johnny Perkins about that. I think identifying those things and getting ready to roll, I'd love to get to work on that. And yes, we have other social issues, homelessness, that sort of thing. But I feel like the whole development of the city has kind of been put on pause and it's up to us to unwrap those plans and put them together in a timeline to unfold them. So that's kind of where I'm sitting.
Yeah, I just wanted to editorialize one thing. I was just thinking about committees as anyone presenting, whether it's a council member presenting or staff, I would really like folks to bring questions that they want to ask council members, that instead of just presenting and then that, it's like, no, what's the question that you need to move forward from that? So I'm just editorializing for all of us to come up with the presentation and then what are the questions that will move us forward? So just throwing that out there. Other comments, thoughts?
I hope we didn't rain on your parade, Council President.
No, I'm all about the feedback. So I will gather it and bring it to the small planning group because this only works if everyone feels like it's going to be valuable. And so, no, much rather hear it now than at the first 15 minutes of the joint meeting. That's good. Okay, anyway, so that's all I have for today. Anything from anyone else for the good of the order? Councilmember Mum.
This was a great meeting.
Oh, good.
It was a great meeting. More of these, please. I got to say, I'm wanting to cheerlead Spokane to get their vaccinations. And I love getting reports about how things are going. I want to hear about what we're doing and how we're getting more shots in people's arms. And we just this week at Spokane Transit heard that S T A wants our fire department to see if they can help stand up a pop-up clinic for their, not just their employees, but maybe their families as well. We can do it for, hopefully, S T A, let's do it for our workers, let's do it for other places. I would love to see more leadership. I don't know how to get there. If you guys have ideas, we've got to take the lead on this. King County is kicking our behind. If you've looked at the numbers of their percentage of people being inoculated, there's no reason why Spokane County can't be where King County is. Let's get there. You know, we complain about going back to phase two. How many front-page news articles, ooh, we're going to phase two? Well, what are we doing to keep us from going to phase two? And I think we all should be talking about this. So if there's something--
Councilmember Mum.
Yes.
I want you to know that we were finally able to make our appointments to get our COVID shots, my husband and I. It took literally one minute to find a place, sign up, and be done. And our first one's tomorrow. It was like not a big deal to sign up.
And I had someone, a plumber at my house, who just, you know, he came in with a mask and we talked about, I said, have you gotten your shot? And he goes, well, I don't know how. I was like, oh, my goodness, people. So I don't know if we want to look at putting some dollars toward public relations, if we can talk with the mayor's side about getting more information out. I know we think we put tons out, but most of the stuff I see is reporting of the state, the state of the health situation. I want to know where plugging people in and being that communicator. A lot of people, like, you know, don't know that it just takes one minute.
There, I will say, from listening in on the every-other-Tuesday meeting with the health district, they do have a pretty elaborate new promotional plan going out, both social media and traditional advertising that's really focused at the generation that's not getting vaccinated. So there are things going on. I'm not saying we should do anything less and not do more, but I just want you to know that there are efforts and they're targeted towards the people who aren't getting the vaccine.
I know I'm beating this drum hard, but if we can put something about conserving water in your utility bills, why can't we put something about how to get your COVID shot?
Yep.
You know, let's think at every level.
Yep. Yep. No, I tried to be clear. I'm not saying that to say that we should rest at all. I just wanted, so that there is some, there are some things going on that we might, I wouldn't have known, but going to that call, so.
I'm glad to hear that, Council President. And I think if we can take what they're doing and port it over to our channels of distribution, social media, website, when you answer the phone at 311, we could offer that services. Would you need help setting up your COVID shot? I mean, this is a public health emergency and we can take the lead on this.
No, 100% agree.
Today, if you go to get pizza, you get a slice of pizza and your shot. So if anybody needs a shot today, go to David's, get a piece of pizza and have a shot.
See? This guy's got it figured out.
Yep. Yep. Yeah, they are starting, going to have some happy hours at the arena, but alcohol-free. So there are just going to be food and party and music. So they, it's coming. But I so agree with you that we should use every channel because that's the only thing that we can do to not go back to phase two. So that's, we need to. Okay, anything else from anyone? All right. Well, have a great day, great rest of the week. We'll see everyone back Monday for 1:15. Must be urban experience, Councilmember Stratton. So we'll see you then. Take care. We're adjourned.
Bye.